Thank you all for coming tonight. First review of meeting minutes from October 7, 2024. Had a chance to look at those. If so, I'd take a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes as written.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearings, conditional use permit application for Calico Development for 10,500 square foot retail store at 211 Center Road on Assessors Map 36, Lot 23, in the commercial land use district. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Steve Givoni. I'm with Wentworth Partners and Associates, engineering firm out of Skowhegan, Maine. In front of you, you have a development request for Kalito Development Group out of Torrington, Connecticut. This is for a generalized retail store, merchandise store, 10,500 square foot. This is a complete site development of, basically, it's an unused part, it's an existing parcel that used to have a house on it, and then the house is gone now. It also still has a two-car garage off on the other side of the property. So this is really a vacant lot that's going to be turned into a retail store. The lot is separated, as you can see, there's a wetland. This wetland is really the, it's an intermittent stream at times, but it's considered a perennial stream that comes off of the sedimentation pond that was built for tractor. They just changed hands, right, to John Deere Tractor Store across the street. They have the pond out front. That pond leads into a culvert. That culvert comes into our, onto our property, and then basically bisects this property. Our development at this time is all on the west side of the development, or our left west side of the property. And again, it includes the retail store and the required parking, truck turnaround area, and loading dock, and basically all the pieces that not only required by the client, but also by the, by the town of Fairfield's ordinances.
Any questions or comments from our board? We're in public hearing, so therefore, is there any question or comments from the public? Hearing none from the three guys in the audience. How about our board? Any questions or comments? You reviewed the documents?
Yeah. I'll have several comments once we get to the discussion.
Very good.
I don't know if we have anyone on Zoom that has any public comment. Chad, anybody join us?
Doesn't look that way.
None.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll move on, and we'll get back to you on the new business.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, none. New business, subdivision revision, minor subdivision, application revision for Lot 4 in a persona, Lot subdivision 1987, identified as tax map 6, Lot 15-4, zoned rural residential discussion and decision. Who is here for that project tonight?
Hi. Our plan is, well, my plan on the lot is to break off. We surveyed a 2.4-acre lot on 19 Horn Hill Road, and my father-in-law is going to build there, and just so they can be close to us, and we can help each other out, and help with care and all that. Yeah. That's the plan for that lot. There's a minor wetland at the beginning that we identified, and we already have engineered and planned, and yeah, that's where we're at now.
Questions or comments from our board about this project?
So this is coming in front of us, Nicole, as a revision to an existing subdivision?
Correct. It was an old subdivision, and even though they're related parties, and typically, it wouldn't trigger subdivision review to split land to a related party because it's already an approved subdivision, he cannot deed off this two acres without planning board approval. So that's the only reason it's in front of you.
And you provided us documentation around requirements for a back lot as far as?
I did. It's in our land use ordinance, and as long as the entrance is 40 feet wide, and they have 54 feet, their surveyor followed our ordinance to the T. It's a two-acre lot minimum. They gave them 2.4 acres. They're going to get a driveway entrance permit if they haven't already gotten one from Bruce.
I don't think we've got him yet. We've met with Bruce, yes.
Bruce was okay with the location of the driveway.
Anything else from our board on this minor subdivision?
Is there a existing home on the property on the intersection of Martin Stream Road and Horn Hill Road, or is that vacant land?
There is an existing home there, yes. Yeah. Kind of tucked in there, that corner lot. Yeah.
So everything else meets the ordinance?
It does.
Hearing no other discussion, I'd call for a vote on this application.
I make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Have a motion.
A second.
And a second, and a third.
Do you have the full plan? I'm sorry.
All those in favor? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
If you could adjourn for a minute and sign that before you move on?
Sure, let's do that.
Okay, thank you.
Two, item 5A, subdivision revision, whoops, conditional use permit application for Calico Development, a 10,500 square foot retail store at 211 Center Road on Assessors Map 36, Lot 23, in the commercial land use district. Any comments from our board now on this issue?
Is the main entrance going to be on 139 or Sheridan Drive?
The main entrance is 139.
Anything else from our board about this project?
I can run through mine. Is the existing garage being demolished as part of this plan?
Yes. I actually spoke to the developer today about that. Nicole had brought that question up when we did meet for the pre-application. He says, before they even start construction, they're going to fence in the whole site, so that garage is being demolished as part of that. No.
Okay, so the whole site's going to be fenced in permanently, or just?
No, just for the construction.
Construction, okay.
So they'll probably do the site work and clearing first, and then drop the fences once they start the building process.
Okay. When is that anticipated to begin? This year, next spring?
I, that's a great question. I think they want to start as soon as they can. I think the purchase, if we're approved tonight, the purchase and sales thing goes through because it's conditional. So I imagine that process is going to take, you know, with the holiday in there, probably a month, month and a half, and then they'll be ready to rock and roll. I know they've already had me send this out to contractors to start getting pricing.
Okay, great. Nicole, I just want to confirm, it is all one law on the tax maps for Fairfield? It looks like at one point it was three lots?
That is correct. It was three lots, and it used to be individually taxed until this purchaser purchased it, but it certainly could be divided into individual lots again.
Is there any intent on the developer to divide this in the future?
That is a possibility. The wetland really separates that property pretty hard, so it depends on what future development looks like for them. They certainly don't want to be paying taxes on a piece of property they can't use, but if they can develop in something else, they'll work that avenue as well.
Anybody else?
I have more, but.
Okay, keep going.
I just have to find them all. It looks like, or we have not, or the developer has not received an MDOT entrance permit yet.
We have not received the entrance permit yet. This one, this is not a new driveway permit. This is actually an existing driveway because of the house that used to be there, so that, it falls under change of use for the MDOT. I did apply for that almost a month ago and have not heard back from them, other than the fact that they acknowledged the receipt of it. So hopefully, we do have stuff back.
And the developer is okay with us making that a condition of approval?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. The entrance onto Sheridan Drive, that will also require a town entrance permit. Has that been coordinated with Bruce at all?
That, yes, that was applied for, and Bruce did add that, so we do have that permit, I believe, at this stage.
He did supply a letter to you, which I handed out at the beginning of the meeting. Bruce did. Should have it in your packet.
Yep.
I don't know if he necessarily put to, you know, the location that his letter referred to, but that is the letter that Monica's holding. You should have the same one.
The town does have a driveway permit, right, that's required?
There is a permit. It is an $85 permit, and they are aware of it. And he was okay with that being obtained at the same time that they get their building permit.
Okay. It looks like on the two stormwater detention, or two sections of the stormwater detention pond, the upper pond is going to be fenced in, but the lower pond isn't. I was just wondering if you could explain why?
Yeah, the upper pond is the sedimentation pond, and that's the one that will actually fill up. The other one is really an overflow at that stage, and it, when that one fills up, it's really not a safety hazard because it's going to be so temporary in terms of being a containment pond. Like, we will probably, even, even, even in the summer of 2023, that pond there would have just been wet versus being open water.
At the loading dock, it looks like there's going to be fence around that. Is that true? Or it says railing?
There's a railing, yeah. The loading dock is four foot higher than the grade out front, so the truck's back in there, so yes, there's a railing around that.
Okay. What about signage for the store? Is there any proposed signage? It looks like there might be out on 139, but I don't see a lot of details around.
That is, that is correct. And in reading the sign ordinance, I think we'll be back in front of you for the sign because they hadn't, they hadn't declared which sign was going to be for the front of the building at this point.
Okay.
And then I think the other sign, any other signage would be on the building, but again, that will all be in front of you as well.
Okay. Because we do have some signage ordinance that needs to be followed, so.
Yes, yes.
The actual parking area itself that faces Sheridan Drive, will that be fully curbed, or will stormwater be shedded from the parking area out into the ditch line along Sheridan Drive?
Yeah, so that is curbed. That's got the bituminous, seven-inch bituminous curb on it, and that directs all the water. As you can see, we're basically, the lot is pitched from Center Street back toward the detention pond, I should say, the sedimentation pond, so all that water is being captured by a catch basin at the bottom of, at the bottom of the parking area. That catch basin has an oil and water separator in it, and then the water then crosses under the road, under the sedimentation area into the sedimentation pond. So basically, we're just filtering out any solids within the, within the water at that point, not oil or gas.
Okay. On the grading and drainage plan C102, it looks like the high point towards the Sheridan Drive section of the paved area will allow sort of like the driveway apron to shed water into Sheridan Drive. Can you just describe to us how that's going to be handled to not add water into Sheridan Drive?
That was on C102, I believe you said.
C102? Looks like the high point.
Yeah, because Sheridan Drive is pitched in that area, so we do have, we're trying to, yeah, we're forcing the water into, so the road is, the road has its own cop, and then we're forcing the water down into the area at the bottom of that driveway to where the, where the culvert basically releases, where we're forcing the water into the swale on the side of the road.
Okay. So it's going to run in a channel at the edge, end of the driveway and where Sheridan, where it meets Sheridan Drive?
Yes, yeah. Again, Sheridan, as we're walking our way out Sheridan, Sheridan Drive continues to drop down below us, so we had to kind of match in our grades on Sheridan Drive to be able to utilize that, that driveway. So that, that entrance really, again, it meets the requirements of the, of the town ordinance in this case, to have a secondary road if you have that corner lot. But also, if you go back to the original, the C, what is it, C100, you can also see how we have to, if we have any of the larger truck, the WB67 trucks, you can see what that traffic pattern looks like to get that truck in there. And again, that's, that's a really large truck for the, for this distribution. I mean, that's got the 19 and a half-foot cab for long haul sleeping, plus the 53-foot trailer. Even if they have the 53-foot trailer, normally, these distributions only have the 14 and a half-foot cab, so I mean, that makes a big difference in how this thing turns.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that water wasn't going to be shedded from the site into Sheridan Drive, and that there was a plan, and the drainage was evaluated.
Now, most of the water's being forced into that catch basin up front, and then we're only looking at about 25 feet. Your concern is about, about 25 feet of surface area that's going to run into that swale.
Surface water going into potentially Sheridan Drive, causing icing conditions in the winter, so.
Right, moving toward the swale between, just because of the pitch, just because of the actual curve of Sheridan Drive as well.
Right, yep. Yeah, the crown of the road. Appreciate the lighting plan. It shows that the light won't travel off the site because there is going to be parking lot lights as part of this.
Yeah, the architect did a great job with that.
Any other questions or comments from our board members? Nicole, finding of fact?
Yeah, I did a draft for you.
Okay.
If you're ready to move to that.
Calico Development Group, 211 Center Road, construct new structure, 10,500 square feet of retail store with site redevelopment on tax map 36, Lot 23, commercial land development district. A site plan showing at a minimum location of existing and proposed structures and distant from lot lines, water bodies, water supply, and sewers, disposal facilities submitted to the planning board with application, site plan sheet C100 dated November 20, 2024. If the market value of the project will exceed $80,000, a copy of the plans and specifications for construction shall be required. Building outline approximately 10,500 square feet. Site plan sheet and stamped building plan for construction will be submitted for the building permit. Existing topographical contour, contours are shown on existing conditions plan. Proposed grading at contour intervals not greater than five feet as shown on sheet 1C102, grading and drainage plan. Site improvements as shown on plan C100. New building, new parking lot, new driveway entrances, locations, and detention pond. Pedestrian and vehicle travel ways and parking area, travel ways as shown on site plan, new entrances shown on C100. Landscaping and buffer areas as shown on C102 in the site plan, commercial land use district. Stormwater and erosion control structures as shown on C100, C001 structures, C102 erosion control notes shown, and stormwater drainage in sheet C107. Kennebec Water District, water and public sewer connections and power lines and outside installations of any machinery or materials as shown on sheet C103, utility plan. Kennebec Water District available along Center Road. Water line size to be determined. The public sewer runs along Center Road. Connection will be made to the existing sewer line, and new electrical pole will be along Sheridan Drive to provide power underground to the building. An estimate of vehicle trips to be generated by the development and any modifications to the public roads which may be necessary to absorb traffic. Figure two, vehicle generation trip analysis by SEAL for freestanding document store, discount store. They will generate fewer than 100 trips in the peak hour, one-way trips. This is below the main DOT traffic movement permit required. A list of names of addresses and landowners within 200 feet of the property boundaries submitted with the application. Letters to others was mailed on November 22, 2024, notifying of tonight's public hearing on this application via Zoom meeting and at 61 Water Street, Fairfield. A legal notice was placed in the Morning Sentinel on Sunday, November 24, 2024, informing the public of this public meeting. If vehicle trip estimates are more than 50 per day, per hour, at its peak hour of usage, an analysis of travel impacts and need for traffic control devices or improvements must be provided, prepared by a qualified registered professional engineer. Traffic analysis has been completed by SEAL, see figure two in the application. A statement from Public Works Director that the proposed improvements to the public roads are adequate and acceptable. Letter from Bruce Williams is here tonight. Analysis of potential environmental impacts, including effects on the surface, groundwater bodies, air quality, wildlife resources. If any potentially negative impacts identified, a management strategy consistent with the performance standards of the ordinance and state and federal regulations must be provided by, prepared by a qualified professional, professional. As shown on Wentworth Partners in Engineering, Grading and Drainage Plan, Sheet C102, C107, Detention Pond and Details Plan. If the development utilizes public water, sewer services, an estimate demand on respective systems, together with statements from the general manager of the Kennebec Water District and superintendent of Kennebec Sanitary District, the concerning and the ability of the respective systems to accommodate the development. Email from Kennebec Water District, figure six. Letter from Bruce Williams, Public Works Sewer Connections in Progress.
Which he did deliver that letter.
Yep, we do have that in file. An erosion control plan provided, prepared by a registered professional engineer as designed by Wentworth Partners and Engineers, see sheet eight. A stormwater management plan prepared by a registered professional engineer as designed by GPI Engineering, see sheets C102 and C107. Findings: The development will not create unsafe, unhealthy conditions within the neighborhood in which it is located, and shall not create or exacerbate effects upon neighboring properties. This proposed 10,500 square foot freestanding discount store project in the commercial land use district has been designed, been designed to be in compliance with the requirements of the district, and the structure is set back from the roadway and allow vehicles to enter and park in the parking lot. The dumpster will be enclosed on the impervious surface. The development will not create or add to traffic congestions at or below Level D of service as defined, and will not create unsafe traffic movements on public roads. The applicant has submitted a SEAL trip generation analysis that shows the store will generate from 13 to 75 one-way trips in peak hours. This store will not generate fewer than, will generate fewer than 100 trips in the peak hours, and in traffic movement permit from main DOT is not needed. The development will not create congestion at or below Level D for service of MDOT. The development will not result in undue reduction of air or quality or water quality or wildlife habitat, and will not cause undue flooding or soil erosion. The proposed project will not result in the reduction of air or water quality or wildlife habitat, and will not cause undue flooding or soil erosion. The stormwater site plans for this project designed and erosion control measures to be used. The development will not, to the greatest extent feasible, preserve historic, prehistoric, or archaeological resources. There is no known identified historic, prehistoric, or archaeological resources on this site. The development will not cause undue strain on public facilities or services, including public roads, water supply, sewer disposal, solid waste systems, police, educational, and other services. The project will not cause undue strain on public facilities or services. The applicant has sufficient financial technical capacity to complete the development. The applicant owns other discount retail store developments and has financial capacity to complete the project as submitted. The development is consistent with the Fairfield Comprehensive Plan and compliance with state and federal law, as well as ordinances, rules, regulations of the town, including the performance standards of the land use ordinance unless the board asks to waive those standards. The business expansion is consistent with the Fairfield Comprehensive Plan in a designated growth area in commercial zone. Conditions of approval: The developer must maintain, obtain a main department driveway entrance permit prior to applying for the building permit. Are there any other conditions of approval? Besides the DOT permit?
I can't think of any.
How about we all get a gift card? I strike that. That's not applicable.
I'm in that line as well, by the way.
No, you are.
I'll be standing, and it is.
This is going to be good.
I make a motion, we approve the application as presented, with the condition that the applicant receive the main DOT driveway entrance permit.
Have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm finding out.
Before you, I would like to thank Nicole for all her help.
She takes all the credit. Really, all the credit.
She deserves it, yeah.
We agree, we agree. No, she is very helpful. Thank you.
All right, see you soon. Thank you.
Any other items on our agenda from the public? Gary, anything tonight?
Well, just trying to learn more about who we might have for a neighbor.
Well, you know as much as we do.
It'll bring more business to your area, for sure.
You've got to admit, real estate is a patient man's game. Anything from a clerk?
I handed you the traffic movement permit from DOT. They have approved the Dunkin' Donuts. Tomorrow is the last day for comment. I commented that the planning board had approved the project as submitted with the plan that they approved, so.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I believe, it's a go.
Now they just have to get their water connection, which?
That's right.
Which we advise they should get sooner than later, but.
Technically, it would be the town at this point who would make that decision.
It's a dialysis clinic.
With the moratorium.
That's it.
Yeah, they just.
Because it's inside urban complex.
Good night, Gary.
Good night. Thank you.
So I suspect, yes.
So we're going to get to Dunkin' Donuts.
Looks that way. Well, it, everything. Well, every, that is the last permit they were waiting for and tomorrow, 12:03 is the day that that becomes valid. And I believe Mr. Landry will sign it because the copy that he sent didn't have his signature on it. It was just a preliminary.
So they're going to clean up the site and the police are going to stop doing raids over there.
They're practicing. It's a practice site for them.
Anything from members? Any questions or comments or items from members tonight? Nothing?
This is my last night, so.
Oh, come on. You aren't going to give us an update on the chicken eggs?
No.
Oh, come on.
They're still contaminated.
They are. I thought they flushed out.
Not chickens. The only time I can eat my chicken eggs is in Willie Park.
Because?
Contaminated people. You don't know where it's coming from.
But in the winter, they're not contaminated?
Right. So I told the CDC, it's going to be bugs and dust.
Because you're giving them clean water and clean grain. But in the summer, they're contaminated, but in the winter, they're not. They're not out eating bugs.
Well, they're out, but there's snow coverage. There's little bugs flying around.
Wow, that's fascinating. Thank you for the.
And they check it four times a year. Every, every three months they check them and they're still confused.
This is DEP?
CDC.
Oh, CDC.
They have no idea why.
Well, thank you for your years of service to the town, Lawrence.
Absolutely. You've been a great help to our board.
I know. It's been this 12 years.
And every time I hear any motion, right there.
That's right.
Depend on you. Thank you.
We're going to miss you.
Okay, and nothing else? I'd call for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
No, no.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd take a second.
Second.
I had to do that.
Thanks, everyone.
No, I should have.
I've enjoyed it.